Good morning. I would like to call to order the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting on September 26th at 9:06 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like to ask our board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I'm Valerie Mondo, filling in for the board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, calbright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit it to the board liaison. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q and A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. With that, will you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson. Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jolena Grande. Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Harry Legrand.
Here.
Paul Medina.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Mary Salis. Los Filo Lobos.
Here.
Joseph Williams. President Costa, we have quorum.
Thank you so much. With that, I'd like to proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask trustee Legrand to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. With that, colleagues, does anybody have any discussion regarding the order of the agenda? They see none, we will launch into it. The first item is my report, and as always, I will keep it brief because I think what Ajita has to say is eminently more interesting than anything I would have to say. I would say that a board member, Haynes and I, were able to go with the Chancellor's office to DC last week, and it was really kind of an extraordinary time to go, obviously with the shutdown looming. But even in something that could have been kind of a bummer trip, it was actually really heartening, in part because so many of the policymakers that we met with were really interested in workforce development. And I can't help but reflect on the work here of Calbright. I think there is obviously a recognition by federal as well as state policymakers about the importance of workforce and development, and more importantly, about really changing how we think about workforce development to mirror the reality of the economy that we're in and the pace of play that's happening now. And so I reflected on Brenda and the good work we're doing here, and it really made me feel quite proud of the fact that we're really on the cutting edge of this conversation. And, you know, from where we started to now, it's really been an incredible journey. So with that, I will turn it over to Ajita for her comments.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. A quarter into the new fiscal year, we're very focused on driving Calbright's priorities forward, on bringing a life to the story that our budget tells. Last week, we joined Schmidt Futures, Georgia State University, and leading philanthropic entities like Gates and Walton Foundations to launch this year's Learning Engineering Tools Competition. This annual endeavor brings together the best minds to accelerate learning outcomes for all students and boost collaboration between technologists, researchers, and educators. Calbright's track will focus on engaging adult learners, and while our goal is to implement proposals within the context of our operations and support systems, what we learn will be shared across the community college system and higher ed more broadly. While we see clear early efficacy here at Calbright to move the needle with regard to adult learner success, collaborating with hundreds of researchers and entrepreneurs to find the best and most promising solutions to this complex equation, this will only catalyze our progress. It's critical that these innovations be built into our operations early in our history so that the largest number of students can benefit as we expand beyond the startup period. The energy is palpable, and the need is urgent. More than 850 people registered for the launch event and will hold Calbright-specific sessions in the weeks ahead. As the leading edge of the learning curve, initiatives like this are a part of our DNA and a part of our founding legislation. We not only seek to solve the complex equation of adult learner success, but also to advance the field of learning science as a whole. Throughout this process and beyond, we'll share what we learn in service of the Chancellor's Vision 2030 roadmap and the spotlight it places on improved outcomes for adult learners. While initial proposals for this competition are due in early November, we're already making progress. And today, I'm pleased to share that we've welcomed a partner into the track of the competition. We have joined forces with Axum Collaborative, and they will invest an additional $500,000 in pursuit of our shared goal of engaging adult learners and nurturing their success. This will not only expand our reach, but also complement our expertise to explore opportunities, not only within Calbright's context, but also in the broader sphere of online education for working adults. Axum, for those who may not be familiar with the name, is the collaborative that formed by Harvard and MIT with the sale of EdX in 2021. Their mission is to catalyze research, development, and partnerships to make learning effective, accessible, and relevant to a diverse audience of learners. They focus on digital education transformation in broad access institutions such as community colleges. And when we first connected with them about this opportunity, one of the things that immediately resonated was Calbright's product-led approach to building this unique model of education, of placing learners' needs and their goals at the center of our decision-making, and then designing around those requirements. Just as we seek to leverage the best thinkers and doers to accelerate our institutional progress and student success, it's important to explore best practices across all industries in which the user's journey focuses on a digital experience. We can borrow tactics from outside higher education and apply them within our context in order to reimagine the student experience. In continuing conversations we've had with this board, I'm looking forward to item 5.2 today, which will serve as the first of several upcoming presentations and opportunities for dialogue around our product-driven approach and why it is a central component of reimagining higher education's relationship with the learner. Our chief product officer will lead this informational item around mapping the Calbright experience, and in the future, in subsequent board meetings, we'll discuss how this feeds into our learning and instruction apparatus and our overall student services and success goals. While I'll let the presentation speak for itself, one thing I'd like to call it special attention to is the role of constant evaluation, iteration, and rapid improvement. If we want to reimagine the traditional student experience, it means we have to regularly question our operations and our procedures. We have to look at things from different angles, different than the traditional ed lens, and we will be willing to explore, we have to be willing to explore and to absorb what works well. And I think this is more important, leave behind efforts that don't advance student success. There's no blueprint for this work, and so the Calbright team is blazing a trail for what is scalable, workforce-driven, and equitable in learning and design, how that can look within community colleges and across public education. While being a product-led organization is the best methodology towards solving the shared challenge of non-traditional learner success, I was excited to see Governor Newsom's recent executive order to better align industry and education toward workforce training outcomes. Earlier this month, Calbright had the opportunity to engage the California Workforce Association at their annual conference and lead several sessions about aligning higher education and industry in service of a thriving economy and a strong, well-equipped labor market. Appley titled "Meeting of the Minds," every aspect of the state's workforce and economic development pipelines were represented. I had the chance to serve on a panel with Labor and Workforce Secretary Stuart Knox, and we discussed the need to reimagine the connection between career and education, the need to innovate together, and to embrace the notion that we have to deviate from the way things have always been done in the past in order to deliver a more prosperous and equitable future, not only for workers, but actually for the state as a whole. By talking about these kinds of things isn't enough, which is why we've established a partnership with Lightcast, which seeks to explore and identify misaligned skills and degree requirements in the public sector that produce unintended barriers and stand in the way of economic mobility for Calbright's community of learners. All of this, of course, scales up in support of the system's Vision 2030 roadmap and Chancellor Christian's priorities to not only enroll more adult learners, but actually to ensure the successful completion and outcomes to reverse decades-long of the history that we've seen in poor completion rates for a growing subset of Californians. At every turn, Calbright is driving forward, and we're going to continue to immerse the board on our progress and growth as we move ahead. I want to thank President Costa and members of the board. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. I'd like the record to note that board member Grande is with us now. With that, the board will now move into closed session. We have one item on the closed session agenda, public employee performance evaluation of the president and chief executive officer. I have allotted 90 minutes just to make sure we have adequate time. We may not use that amount, but I didn't want folks to feel rushed. So with that, we will be back momentarily. Thank you. Thank you so much. We are back from closed session. The board did not take any action in closed session. With that, I'd like to open it up to any public comment.
There is no public comment.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda, section three of our agenda. Trustees, do any of you wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, is there any pub? Yes?
I had one amendment to the notes. I was at the meeting, and it did not reflect that I was at the meeting on July, so I just saw that in the notes that... I don't know if that amendment can be made. If it is, I will consent to approve it.
I think what you can do is you can put that in your motion, see if we get a second.
Okay. So I rarely motion, I let everyone else do it. So, how do I say this? I don't know. I moved to approve the consent agenda, subject to the minutes of the meeting being updated to reflect that I was at the meeting.
Absolutely. Colleagues, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. With that, is there any public comment on the item?
There is no public comment.
Okay, with a first and a second, can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Epstein.
Paul Medina.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Los Filo Lobos.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you so much. We are skipping ahead to our informational reports because outside of the consent agenda, we don't have any action items. The first item, item 5.1, was removed from the agenda, so we're going to skip right to 5.2. And that item is reimagining the student experience, Calbright's product-driven approach. With that, invite Vivek up to present.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. My presentation this morning is the first in the series of three planned presentations to this board, and this one focuses on the approach we are taking to creating a reimagined student experience at Calbright. Next. Let me take a moment to talk about our agenda today. As we can all agree, the quality of the overall student experience is the primary driver of the student's level of engagement with Calbright and its learning ecosystem. Engagement in turn determines their pace and progress towards completion of the program and development of the skills that will ultimately result in a favorable job outcome. Everything we do across the organization goes towards building this student experience. So over the next few minutes, I will present the tenets of this differentiated approach to building the reimagined student experience, and to praise the board of how we are implementing it. But before that, I'd like to talk about the problem that we're trying to solve, that is, the traditional student experience, its shortcomings, and how the traditional approach to building the student experience results in these shortcomings. Next. Let's take a look at what the friction points are in the traditional student experience. Next. So the traditional student experience falls short because it leaves a lot of questions unanswered, questions that are fundamental to a student's engagement. Questions like, which program should I choose? What skills are required for this job that I'd like to have? Can doing this course get me this job? How can I get credit for the things that I already know? How can I know how I am progressing and get help to keep me focused? Next. The underlying cause for the traditional student experience, which leaves a lot to be desired, is the approach in building the student experience. The traditional approach is linear. It is driven by goals that are based on an internal understanding or assumptions of what the student wants. It is viewed through an institutional need without going to the source and building backwards from there. As a result, these assumptions are never tested. And the focus remains on seeing predefined plans to completion without the flexibility to incorporate newly obtained information or react in a timely manner to actual learning from the student feedback. Now, I'd like to emphasize that this problem is not just limited to higher education. The technology sector is rife with examples of costly mistakes because of the build-and-they-will-come mindset. The underlying problem that led to these mistakes is the same, failing to assess the user's needs, constraints, and goals. They did not correlate quantitative and qualitative feedback and put it in the hands of those who can move the needle on the user experience. They did not ask the question, are we measuring what matters? Are we creating the insights that make measurements actionable? It measures success in terms of output, such as features completed, rather than the outcomes, such as the number of problems actually solved. Valuable lessons have been learned from these mistakes that have evolved into a set of guiding principles and best practices that we can take advantage of. Next. So what needs to change in how we build the higher-ed student experience? How might we be led by what our learners need and by their lived experiences? What does it mean to build a college that prioritizes our students' needs and goals? And how can we not just plug these holes, but actually deliver a delightful student experience that derives from an empathetic understanding of their needs, their goals, their lived experiences, and their aspirations? What do we need to do differently to build such a user experience? Next. Recognizing the problems of non-traditional learners requires a different approach. We know old ways fail because the system was not created to serve our target population. In addition to understanding who we are designing for, we need to rethink the way we design. Next. So here are the tenets of the approach that we are using to build this reimagined student experience at Calbright. We must use methods and metrics to understand the students' needs. The qualitative methods give us direct feedback from the student, and the quantitative methods provide data insights through tools built to observe their interactions within the learning process at an aggregate level. We correlate the two to build an empathetic understanding of their needs and obtain actionable insights. To deliver a seamless experience across all touchpoints, we must create cohesion in the way we work across teams within the organization. We must develop a culture of testing assumptions in rapid iterative development cycles. We must measure outcomes, not just output. Output are the actions and activities that help us achieve the outcomes. An example of an output would be a feature that lets a student see their pace and progress, for example. The outcome would be the increase in student engagement as measured by analytics, like increased time on the student portal or higher number of repeated student visits to the portal. We need to develop the tools that help us determine not just if the user has been served, but whether they are satisfied and if the end goal has been achieved. This approach is what we are calling product-driven at Calbright. Next. So let's talk about some of the steps that we're taking to implement the first tenet of this approach, empathize and understand. Next. In this approach, a useful technique in developing empathy and understanding of our users' need is journey mapping. This exercise illustrates the students' experience in relation to the Calbright learning ecosystem across different touchpoints. We recently undertook this exercise, and to put it in numbers, 24 departmental sessions were conducted with the participation of 60 attendees across the whole organization. Fifteen student interviews were conducted that provided valuable insights into what our students' challenges and needs are, and it resulted in the creation of an alignment map, also known as the student journey map, and four student personas. Our goal is to establish these student interactions and interviews as a regular practice so we can build upon what we have gathered in this exercise and to continue to collect student input through these qualitative methods. Next. Another useful technique towards building this empathy and understanding of your users' needs is to segment your user population by important characteristics so you can better understand the specific needs of the different segments of your user base and then tailor the solutions to better fit their needs. The opportunity to have direct conversations with our students also allows us to put a hand on the pulse of students' experience and gather direct feedback, both positive and negative, and take corrective action where needed. Through the persona creation, we were able to validate certain assumptions and also learn a few new things about our students that has made our understanding of their needs better and richer. For example, we learned from David, who's loving the learning experience but is also looking for a better understanding of his pace and progress. We heard from Yvette, who was able to use her CRM certification as a foundation to earn additional credentials that landed her a job. Or Kimberly, who confirmed our existing understanding around onboarding needs. We heard from others who were asking for help with time management or connecting with their peers to build a sense of community. Efforts on all of this are already underway. Next. The second tenet of this approach is to create cohesion across the different parts of the organization to unfragment the student experience. Next. And to deliver the streamlined experience, we must create cohesiveness in our efforts and initiatives so that the learning, the wraparound services, and the support all flow into a unified, integrated experience. This cohesiveness is achieved by connecting the dots across the different parts of the organization that engage in providing the service or the feature to the student. How the different parts come together in the background to enable that feature or service must be transparent to the user, shifting the complexity from the user to the organization. I must emphasize that this requires a change in the way we work together. To do that, we need a common vision of the student experience and a common roadmap for direction and priority. Next. And that brings us to our common vision. And our common vision is encapsulated by our product vision statement that we created collaboratively earlier this year. It reads, "A seamless, quality, skills-based, online learning experience that positions adult learners to succeed in the knowledge economy, delivered through flexibly paced programs, integrated with readily accessible academic counseling, community, and career support." This is what we're calling our product vision. Next. The second important step to achieving this cohesiveness is to have a common roadmap. We're calling this the product roadmap. The roadmap is not a scheduling tool with defined target dates, rather a working tool for our teams to achieve a common direction and priority. We developed this roadmap earlier this year to help prioritize competing initiatives and undertakings that we deal with every day. We created a now, next, and later categorization within our roadmap to help build and address our foundational needs while building a path towards the transformational and the aspirational. We also developed a lightweight prioritization method that allows us to focus our efforts first on the low-hanging fruit that gives highest value for relatively low effort and addresses the most immediate needs while we work on higher-value but also higher-effort initiatives. As you can see on the right half of the slide, the high-value, low-effort tasks occupy the top left corner, or what we call the sweet spot, and the top right quadrant contains the high-value and high-effort initiatives. Next. The third tenet of the approach is to iterate, use a methodology that allows us to test our assumptions. Next. To that end, we adopted an agile development methodology in January of this year within the tech team. This methodology is the linchpin of the iterative philosophy. It allows us to take what we learn through quantitative and qualitative methods from our students, such as through the recently conducted student journey mapping exercise and the planned recurring student interviews that'll be coming up. We then prototype and implement these ideas and then measure the resulting student experience through various tools. We make necessary changes based on what we learn from the observation and measurement in addition to the direct feedback from our students. This cycle of learn, build, measure underpins the continuous improvement that we seek to achieve. Next. This visual shows how we take it from the high-level roadmap initiatives to a lower-level prioritized list, and then on to iterations, or what we call sprints, through which we create a path towards releases of these features and services to our students. Next. The last tenet of this approach, measure. As they say, you cannot improve what you cannot measure. We develop tools to measure the student experience, establish metrics, and constantly monitor trends to understand how we are performing for the user. Next. A recent example in this regard was the NPS survey that the product team ran using a tool called Hotjar that we implemented earlier in the year. We created a survey that asked the users, our students, if based on the value that they had received at Calbright, how likely are they to recommend it to others? This survey was integrated into the portal through the implemented tool. Our objective was to create a baseline for NPS, or net promoter score, which is a common metric used across all industries and measures the engagement or the satisfaction of your users with your product. The results were extremely encouraging, and we were delighted to see that our student population really appreciates what Calbright is doing and how we are serving them. The experiment also corroborated the theory that student response is higher when sought within the context of learning. We received 1,003 responses from an active enrollment at the time of roughly 2,400, and 384 out of those 1,003 respondents also provided the optional comments, which is of immense value. This in turn gives us a higher degree of confidence in the metric value. Our score stands out at 71 against an average score of 32 across the education sector, as reported by Hannover Research. While this is encouraging, we will continue to monitor this and other metrics that we are creating on a regular basis to ensure that we are always maintaining to ensure that we are always maintaining this high level of satisfaction across our enrolled student population. Next. Finally, and to underscore the importance of measurement and how we are incorporating it in the systems that we're building, I'd like to make a special mention of one of our initiatives, which is underway, our new student portal, which we are building on a new contemporary technology platform. And it will not only be the vehicle of an integrated student experience, but will also contain the tools that measure the experience and capture inline feedback from our users within the context of the learning experience. The portal is an important tool in the learning ecosystem as it delivers the experience to the student. We're building this portal to be student center with integrated support services and communications, really readily providing information needed by the student when they need it and building into it the tools for capturing their feedback or continuous improvement. I'd like to wrap up by saying that even though we have set up this framework, we still have a lot of work to do. But I'm confident that the steps that we are taking and implementing this approach will provide us the visibility and the ability to take action quickly. In the next two parts of the series, we will provide this board a deeper dive on the cohesive effort to create the seamless student experience and the capabilities we are developing to build an ecosystem that will enable that experience. Like to thank you for your time.
Thanks so much. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Board member Epstein.
Hi, thanks for that presentation. When you say that student satisfaction is in the seventies, are you able to specify what about Calbright led to that high satisfaction score?
Absolutely. And I'm actually happy to report that we, so the key things that we saw there were our student support services, the students feel extremely supported in that they're able to reach counselors readily and they can have their questions answered. So that really stood out in that satisfaction survey. A lot of students also felt that the learning materials, they were, and the rate at which they were able to learn, that they had, that exceeded their expectations. We were, when we conducted the survey, we thought that perhaps the cost would be the driving factor in that satisfaction, but it was not. It was actually the quality of our services and our learning material. And so that made the score that much more delightful is the word for us.
And a quick follow up, it's a different subject, but with the emergence of generative AI and ChatGPT have, I'm not even sure you're the right person to ask, but how are we thinking about that when it comes to the student experience and their practice against, you know, the educational goals? Is that something that's part of this effort or is it being done separately?
That is, did you want to comment on that?
So I would say, actually, I wish Shannon were here with us today and she might be on the phone, but we've been actually talking about this internally, specific to learning and instruction, right? So just as we're thinking about what skills does an individual need to be prepared for? And we often think about it in the context of technical computing skills or collaboration skills or some of these other things. What's become true and evident in the work around generative AI has been about prompting skills, right? So how do we actually teach folks to and support folks in working with new technologies as they come out, especially when it has a lot to do with how they ask questions and how they assess critical nature of information, how they evaluate, you know, what's kind of behind the model, right? How's the model been trained? Where's the data source coming from? Is it unchecked fact from, you know, the open internet? Is it a closed system of inputs? You know, these are increasingly going to be skills that are going to be important for all of us to learn. And we're thinking about how to place an acute focus on that also within our learning and instruction activities.
I'd just like to add to that, that AI also brings.
Oh, Shannon's there. Did you want to make any comments, Shannon?
Sure. No, I actually, Ajita, you said it very well, but yeah, I was just gonna say, I would just add that we are definitely considering how we can integrate it and even help students understand it, right? We know that they will be reaching out to our AI chatbot friends and seeking information, but we really need to assist them and how do they then take that information to learn from it, summarize it, paraphrase it, but still be able to devise like application of learning versus just, oh, the chatbot GPT told me this, so now it's true. And I also think another opportunity is even how we think about leveraging at scale feedback for students and if there are opportunities for them to either practice engagement, like interview questions, responses, and getting some early responses back. So very excited about the opportunities that lie ahead.
Yeah, I think Shannon pretty much captured what I was about to say, so.
Great. I can, I can jump in really quickly too, you know, obviously AI and ChatGPT and that whole world is super relevant. So one of the things we're doing right now in career services is we have some folks who have special kind of experience using AI and ChatGPT to generate cover letters and resumes and using those to kind of help students understand where their skills match the things employers are looking for. So that's happening right now with the tools that exist already.
And maybe just one more comment to add to this, Tom, this is a really powerful question is to bookend Ajita's opening remarks. The tools competition, the learning engineering tools competition has a competitive priority for tools that incorporate AI. And OpenAI has also added a learning impact prize to further support those applicants and those winners who have a strong approach to using AI to advance equity and outcomes. So we'll have a lot coming down the pike related to that question as well.
And also one more thing in the AI field is, is what we call NLP, natural language processing. So it gives us an ability to also, again, going back to the objective of understanding student needs, whereas it was not possible to look at perhaps a lot of written communication that the students are sending perhaps to counselor or staff and try to derive insights from that nowadays. So we can employ some of these tools so that it also equips our support staff to then use those actionable insights to tailor their approach towards a more human centered help and support for the students. So that's another area that we can definitely utilize.
One technical note, we need to read into the record two of the responses. One was from Don Orth, VP of Student Services at Success. The other was from Shannon McCarty, VP of Learning and Instruction. So let the record just reflect that they answered that as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Adrian Brown, for her comment.
I have a request and a question. So I saw myself in that student persona screen. There was one quote there talking about hearing things only via audio and needing a summary in writing. So my request would be if we could get these PowerPoints in advance, even same day of the meeting. It would be really helpful. My question though is, is can anyone share more about the personas, the student personas that you discovered? And what are some things that were learned? Thank you.
So yeah, the personas, we segmented the population, our student population based on certain characteristics, you know, whether they have a job, you know, what their family situation is like. Are they supporting someone at home? Are they responsible for, you know, are the caretakers? And other demographic information. And so with these segments, we then divided them into personas when we tried, when we interviewed these people. And so then we're able to take those comments and try to look at some patterns across those segments so that we know that this particular segment has these needs, these specific needs. And that gives us that insight to when we're developing any kind of service or feature or enhancement, et cetera. We keep an eye on all of these segments and their specific needs. So it helps us fine tune those services to be more tailored to their, to their needs. What we're also doing is one, one exercise, you know, when you try to do the user segmentation is to make sure that it correlates back and is exactly representative of all of the different segments that are, and that's a bit of a tuning, fine tuning exercise. So we are also correlating this data back into our enrolled data demographics and making sure that we're hitting the right spots and that we're not, our data doesn't, or our derived understanding does not have any bias with respect to data in it. So, so those are some of the things that we're doing in the segmentation. And we're taking all of this, these comments, looking at those patterns, and we have, we're creating lists of these recurring patterns so that we can then incorporate it into, for example, our student portal design and other services and integrations that we're developing.
One more housekeeping item. I need the record to reflect that Marissa Bold also spoke, Head of Strategic Growth and Development. Thank you. With that, colleagues, any other questions or comments? Remember, Haynes?
Um, so I understand how you sort of got our, our learners into certain segments. Did you disaggregate? Was there, one, first, did you disaggregate by race, gender? And ethnicity, those kinds of things? And if you did, were there any differences on how they were categorized?
So what we tried to do is correlated back to the, so the sample set that we took. We wanted to make sure that the sample set is representative of our actual distribution across these parameters. And we hit the right distribution in a lot of, for example, gender was right on target. The age was right on target. Ethnicity was right on target. And then there were a couple of other parameters which were slightly off, but that is the nature of this thing. So we, we will do this on a regular basis so that we can set our, you know, get the exactly right sample set. So, but on the most of the parameters that we did, that we segmented against, we were pretty much on target on those.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing? You know, it's interesting, you use the word disaggregation of the data from the personas. And actually, it's almost like the demographic assumptions that exist when you break down the demographic data and groups into those boxes comes off the page when you do the qualitative analysis that goes into developing the personas. So what more beyond dimensions of race or class or gender do we need to understand about the learners, their underlying motivations, their needs, how they're accessing services, how they're processing information, what conditions are conducive to learning? So the, the, the exercise is interesting, the, the check on whether the personas are representative enough is the way that we look at our quantitative data, right? Is there, are there groups of students that are likely to fall in these persona categories? But the act of developing the persona is so powerful and impactful in the design process because it represents a much more holistic picture of a learner that's likely to be in our institution and that we're likely to need to have a server.
I got a line now, so we have the Jolena.
Well, geez, I think I stepped in front of you in line there, just a quick comment. I thought the presentation was really well done, but that the background was also really well written. So it really set out a clear case of, of what you're doing up here. And I appreciate the, the time and the effort that you put into this comprehensive background.
Thank you.
Next, we have Grande and then LaGrande.
Thank you very much. And I am looking very forward to the next two segments of this presentation that will further elaborate on much of the work that's being done at Calbright. But I, for just a moment, wanted to ask a few clarifying questions regarding net promoter score. I'm familiar with it, but as I'm looking at the information that was presented, I think I understood that we were querying current students. That's how we were evaluating. Is there any plans for the future to go back out on an alumni basis and then make a comparison between those who are currently enrolled versus those who have completed? And then possibly even going further and setting some standard by which we plan to increase those MPSs every year for the alumni versus the in-progress students? Any comment that you would make on the net promoter score?
That's, that's actually a great idea. And we've had, definitely have a focus on improving our alumni relations and the quality of alumni experience. So we can definitely incorporate that into our plans going forward.
I will say, there's a whole range of metrics actually coming out of that, that we're working to develop coming out of an alumni survey that we are beginning to field. Now, our N sizes are small still, but the, the act of sort of creating the measurement tool and the way of understanding what value alumni have gotten from the institution. So beyond the tracking that we can do around outcomes, how are they finding the value in the way that it's advanced them in their lives or their careers? Or, or is there other feedback that we want to get in there? I wish I would have had something like that so that net promoter score or scores like it are useful both across the spectrum of depending upon where individuals are in that lifecycle. But I think equally true is we're trying to really cultivate the data around what are our alumni telling us now that they're out there in the real world? And how do we need to begin thinking about and incorporating and leveraging that data?
Then just a follow up, what about those who separate before completion? So I don't want to categorize.
So we are, that's the hardest, I'm sure every higher leader will tell you, is the hardest group to reach out to because the separation usually is internalized as a failure. And so it is hard to get folks, once you've lost them. But that's, that is of deep interest to us as well. So we, you know, we fielded it to everybody in our universe, but we continue to try to, that, that's really the understanding that we want because, you know, often I think the limited data that we have received from folks who have left, often it has been for life circumstances. And I think that's an active re-engagement that we have as a regular matter. And we try to allow folks to have that space, but maintain that relationship with us. And that's a lot of what Vice President Worth's Student Services team is engaged in on the front lines. But it's for folks who have left and haven't returned. That's really the question that we're interested in. Is there more we could have done or can do as an institution in those circumstances?
I'm wondering if we would find that they were satisfied at the point of separation and that they would come back to us at some point in time in the future, should they need us, but that they were not dissatisfied with the experience that they had. And that's important information as well.
Yeah, agreed, all of it.
Absolutely. And on the technical side, we're creating these platforms for, you know, I alluded to the communication, integrated communications. And so that will be used across the board, whether it's enrolled students and we can reach out to those who are not actively engaged to then get that feedback and then aggregate it to look at actionable insights.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. My question was more around how does the mental health issues or needs show up in this data that you're getting? Because from a non-traditional student perspective, is that something that they've identified as needing more assistance around or direction with?
Absolutely. And, and that was actually even in our NPS survey and also in another survey that we did, but also in the analytics that we're looking at. So earlier this year, we integrated a tool called VCG into our student portal. And when we talked to VCG, they told us that usually across the board, their engagement in like the first few months is about ten percent or so. And ours was way ahead of that. And we were looking at the analytics and we were also observing that that page that links to the VCG tool that we integrated with was the most used or clicked on button on the portal site. And in the surveys that we did, that definitely bubbled right up to the top, right up there with the support services, help, and that they were delighted that there was something like this. And a lot of students that we actually then interviewed in person, some of them, and of course, that's their discretion to talk or not talk about it. But, but of their own volition, they've offered this information and said that it was a fantastic tool for them and a great service for them. And a lot of them are using it actively and are very thankful for it. So absolutely.
Thanks. With that, I'm going to open it up to any public comment on this item.
There is no public comment.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate it. Next up. Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate it. Next up, we have item 5.3, our 2023-24 Legislative and Budget Update. With Jenny Johnson. Thank you so much.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, Board of Trustees, Jenny Johnson, Vice President of Government Relations.
Can you, is your mic on or can you lean in a little bit?
Is that better? Everybody, perfect. Good morning. I'm here today to present, provide an update of my team's work this past year on our engagement on the budget and legislative cycle, as well as provide some insight into how we're approaching the summer months and the fall, all in preparation for the upcoming 2024 Legislative Session, both here in California and thanks to your approval in DC in the coming months ahead. Next slide. There are four strategies my team and I approach for our work. We, it's about informing through storytelling. It's listening, which is so important, building trust through candid dialogue and consistent engagement and follow-through. And I know that's just like captioning quite a bit there, but it's really with 120 legislators, it's really trying to understand where they are and how we can fit into their discussion and their priorities. Next slide. Our audience. I know this might be redundant, but I wanted to remind everybody, our audience, our focus for engagement during the session is the state legislature, of course. It's the Office of the Governor, it's the Department of Finance, and it's the Legislative Analyst Office. Beginning this fall, we will also be in engagement at the federal level. We have a meeting in DC at the end of October. We're really excited about meeting with our new lobbying firm, and I'll share more out on that later. As shared earlier this year, 37 of the 120 legislators were newly elected officials. It's really exciting. This provided my team an opportunity to engage new members with very little information about Calbright and how we were able to learn about their priorities and really strategize about opportunities for future engagement, engagement, whether that was in the Central Valley, Inland Empire, in the Bay Area, Los Angeles. Not taking anything for granted, we continue to engage the remaining 83 legislators. It's critical that we provide regular updates and stand ready and available to answer members' questions. Staffers and members appreciated hearing about our enrollment growth and program completers. They also appreciated learning about our new student body formation and the programs in the pipeline. They remain focused on learning about employment opportunities for our students and our accreditation status. Every legislator and staffer is provided what we call a Calbright 101. It's a document that has up-to-date information on demographics, enrollment, and completions, and relevant course data within the respective legislative district. Members appreciated understanding who we're serving statewide, but admittedly, it's all local for them. How many members are in the IE? How many, how many students, rather, are in the IE? How many are in Oakland? They want to go really granular to understand how are their students doing? And we were able to provide that. Regarding engagement, there were a number aha moments. One, the legislature did not introduce legislation to shut down the college. I'm going to pause for a second. That is really significant. Two, this is the second year that Calbright was not in final budget negotiations. I'm going to pause for another second. Also really significant. For those of you on the Board of Trustees since the inception of Calbright or simply following Calbright, these updates are not insignificant, and I would offer what I believe is a shift in dialogue and within the state capital. Despite the many aha moments, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge some challenges. Yes, we're appreciative of the shifting view of Calbright, but our work is certainly not over. There are still critics, and there are some legislators who wanted to defund us. In the coming months ahead, we'll be monitoring changes in policy and budget committee leadership and makeup and engaging in coordinating. Likewise, we're laser-focused on the state budget, mindful of the current budget considerations taking place in the upcoming year. Thank you for your time today. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thanks, colleagues. Any questions or comments? That is success right there, that we don't have any questions, in addition to what you just told us. With that, any public comments on this item?
There is no public comment.
Thank you. Great. Thank you so much for the update. Next up, we have item 5.4, an update on Calbright's accreditation.
Good morning, President Costa and members of the board. Today, I'm excited to discuss accreditation and Calbright's journey over the last three years. I am also delighted to be joined by Dr. Leah Matthews, the Executive Director of the Distance Education Accrediting Commission. Together, we'll share some insights on why accreditation matters and provide some additional remarks to Calbright's accreditation status. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So just to reset, Calbright was established through the 2018 Budget Act by then Governor Jerry Brown and our California State Legislators. We opened in October of 2019 with the following mission statement. Calbright is committed to increasing economic mobility and closing equity gaps for adults who lack easy access to traditional forms of higher education. Calbright offers online, flexible, affordable, skills-based programs that provide tangible economic value for both working adults and hiring managers. We are an adaptable, reflective, and responsive institution dedicated to continuous improvement, which is at the core of accreditation. Accreditation represents an institution's willingness to abide by quality standards. It symbolizes accountability and consumer protection for students and the public by ensuring institutional integrity and effectiveness. Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Matthews, who will share with us more on why accreditation matters. Next slide, please.
Hi, everyone. It's very nice to get to spend some time with you. I'm speaking to you remotely from Washington DC, where the Distance Education Accrediting Commission has its headquarters. Certainly, right now, accreditation is a topic that is getting a lot of attention at the Department of Education and at members of Congress. It's because accreditation is looked at as the vehicle for accountability and quality assurance for educational programs across the spectrum. At DEAC, we were very pleased to work with Calbright through the accreditation process. I will tell you, the staff there has been incredibly responsive to the commission and its efforts to receive data and information about student progress at Calbright. In particular, we were mindful of the kinds of scrutiny Calbright was receiving as it went through the process. And something DEAC worked pretty hard on was evaluating student achievement data, retention data, working closely with Calbright in our office for institution research to, to really examine how improvements they made to services and curriculum and materials and support structures was having a direct and immediate impact on students. So we're looking forward to seeing more from Calbright in that regard. Accreditation is essential for institution growth as it relates to financial aid services. Students at Calbright, by virtue of DEAC accreditation, can now be eligible for federal financial aid programs. Once Calbright completes that process with the Department of Education, funding resources will be available in the form of Pell Grants, student loans, and then any other types of grants or, or funding, whether it's Veterans Administration, Department of Defense, Federal Service, can all be available to Calbright students through its accreditation with DEAC. Another feature of our process at DEAC allows for growth and expansion through different programs. Calbright is eligible now to add to its portfolio of programs by entering applications for associate degrees, all the way up through doctoral degrees. Regardless of an institution's mission, we have a process to support their growth and development in developing degree programs, expanding educational offerings to students, and, and working along the way hand-in-hand with our institutions as they do that. DEAC is called on as an expert in distance education. I have served on a number of negotiated rulemaking panels with our Department of Education. I have spoken with members of Congress and their staff about accreditation and distance education. And it's a real honor to sort of be at the forefront of setting standards for how teaching and learning takes place in a distance education setting, and particularly in a competency-based education model that Calbright deploys. One of the features of our standards is to have flexibility for how students learn, their pace of learning, the timing of when that learning occurs, and the types of interactions that they have with faculty and staff along the way. Our standards are built around assuring quality in those types of areas. I think that about hits all the talking points that I had, but I'm happy to continue to Mika in any area or any place a board member has a question about DEAC and go from there.
Thank you so much, Dr. Matthews, and we appreciate you being here. Next slide, please. So why the Distance Education Accrediting Commission? DEAC has an excellent reputation as an institutional, mission-driven accreditor with high standards and quality assurance in online education. DEAC holds recognition with the US Department of Education, as well as the Council for Higher Education Accreditation. Its scope is not limited to a particular degree level. The goal of DEAC is to ensure high standards of, of educational quality in distance education institutions. It accredits by requiring compliance with its published standards, policies, and procedures, and fostering continual self-improvement. Next slide, please. So I want to briefly highlight some key milestones in legislative deadlines in Calbright's accreditation process. In January of 2020, we presented our plan for accreditation. In March of 2021, we submitted our application for accreditation. In September of 2021, we were deemed ready, which was evidence of pre-candidacy or pre-accreditation. And then in July of 28 of 2023, Calbright was granted three years of initial accreditation. And that is a year and a half ahead of our legislative deadline, which was April 1st of 2025. I just want to take a moment to just reflect on that and say, thank you. Yes, thank you. It's a huge undertaking for our faculty, our staff, our administrators, and our leader, who has been a champion in this area around continuous improvement. And we are so grateful for the team that President Menon has built and has enabled us to really move the mark in this particular area around continuous improvement.
Hey, Tamika, I don't know if I could just interject here for one minute about how rare it is for a startup to get this far, to have students enrolled and receive accreditation. It is very, very difficult to run an operation long enough and produce enough evidence of student achievement without an accreditation status. So I really commend Ajita and Tamika and her team for their perseverance going through this process. It is not easy. Now that they have accreditation, there are going to be more and more opportunities to serve the students of California.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So accreditation by DEAC is a reliable indicator of the value and quality of online education that an institution offers. And again, Calbright received three years, which is typical of initial accreditation. And that will take us through June of 2026. Next slide, please. So at a high level, next steps for Calbright is to develop and implement a strategic approach for continuous improvement focused on student success. We will have a change from dot.org to dot.edu, which is awesome. And that will change on our website and our catalog. And then in addition to that, we'll continue to engage in a substantive change process around new programs. We'll have annual reporting around financial reports, as well as our annual report on our student data. And with that, I will say thank you and open it up to any questions, President Costa.
Thank you so much for the presentation, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Or member Grande?
I have been waiting for this. I cannot tell you how long. And I so appreciate not just the presentation, but also bringing in our advocate from DEAC to be here with us as well. Initial accreditation is a huge milestone. What are the next steps in terms of securing permanent, ongoing accreditation? And what will that timeline look like?
Next year, we will start another self-evaluation report and lots of exhibits. And, you know, it's always a focus on continuous improvement and our student outcomes. And so that will be a part of our build over the next two years to ensure that we are ready to submit our next self-evaluation report by 2025 and continue on mapping toward a five-year accreditation approval. And we'll be engaged in that through 2026.
You've done an amazing job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Matthews for joining us. For those who don't know, the accreditation process is really intense. And so I want to thank DEAC for partnering with us, especially because we're very unique in this space. And so I just really appreciate you meeting us there. And of course, big kudos to Tamika and her team, because I know it was a lot of hard work. So looking forward to our continued partnership. And this is really a wonderful milestone for us as a college.
Thank you.
With that, is there any public comments on this item?
There is no public comment.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Next up, we have our standing item, which is our reports on contracts and purchases. I'll walk them up Ange to go over that.
Good morning, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. There were 19 contracts executed in August, and there were purchases totaling 533,194 and 33 cents also in a period of August. Were there any questions?
Great. Thank you, Board Member Epstein.
Yeah, I just have a question about the legal services, and maybe it's, our general counsel should answer. But I thought we had gone to a new firm. I see there's the, the 3F contract, a new 3F contract, and also a couple other legal offices. So I would just like an explanation of what we're, who our contract lawyers are and what they're doing.
I think our general counsel's coming up, if she would.
Yes.
And now I know, let's read into the record, our general counsel that is joining us.
Hello, this is Letizia Ramirez, General Counsel, for the record. So to answer your question, Board Member Epstein, so we did enter into smaller amount, dollar amount contracts with F3, which previously served as special counsel, in order to ensure some continuity and institutional memory for a couple of items that are pending or come up that they previously advised on. So just so we had them as a resource. We've also entered into two different contracts with smaller law firms, like the Law Office of Julian Gross and also the Law Office of Michelle Choi, which were, these are solo practitioners who have very niche or specialized experience. And one of them in apprenticeship and kind of public, private, or public and labor partnerships around workforce and employment. And then also in terms of software as a service, SaaS, and more technical contracts, which, as you can imagine, as Calbright, you know, I, I have experience reviewing, obviously, tech contracts. But as we're growing and really investing in a lot of our technological infrastructure, I really wanted to bring in someone with expertise, and that's on the Law Office, Michelle Choi.
Thanks. Did we also do a contract with a firm going forward?
Yes, I can speak to this. We actually approved a pool of legal services going forward. And so I think there were four different firms.
Yes, the primary was Lazzano Smith. And then number two, number three was total three, Burke William Sorensen, as well as Bes, Besen Krieger.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Okay, we don't have any constituency group reports today. So with So with that, I will open it up, um, for public forum, if there are any members of the public that wish to be heard.
President Costa, there is no public comment.
All right. Well, then, uh, the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, and we can adjourn. Thank you.